I'm going to call our meeting to order for the Burke County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for Tuesday, January 21st, 2014. With us tonight, we have for our edification Chaplain David Bean, and we also have to do our pledge tonight, we're fortunate to have our honor color guard for the Burke County Sheriff's Department, so proud to have them there. We've got a fairly lengthy docket with five presentations and 15 consent items and one decision, so we'll move through that as quickly as we can. So if you'll stand with me as Chaplain David Bean gives our edification and remain standing after that with the color guard gives our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Chaplain?
Dear Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for the facility that has been prepared and presented for us. We thank you for the hands of preparedness and God and the ability to use of it. God, tonight as we come about your business, because God, when we deal with man, it is your business, and help us to realize here tonight that all we say and do, God will one day be brought before you. So God, I pray for the wisdom that we need, the openness of heart, dear Father, but most of all, the desire, God, to serve as these commissioners do, and God, the willingness of us to be served here in Burke County. God, I thank you for allowing me to be a part of this county, to live in this county, and God, for many years' service, county, and I just give you the praise and glory here tonight and pray that your perfect will be done, for it's in Christ's name we ask it. We all say, "Amen."
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Captain, if you'd like to jump back to the front so we can take a picture. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Pastor Christian. Mr. County Manager, please note that all the commissioners are present along with the county attorney and yourself. I have given the county clerk the evening off to travel to Raleigh. She will be attending the clerks convention, and she had an early class in the morning, so she and the Valdez clerk have left, and I hope they have a good, safe trip down to Raleigh. First order of business we have is the approval of a meeting minutes from November the 9th, our regular meeting, 19th, our regular meeting, December the 4th, pre-agenda, December the 4th, a recess meeting, and December the 17th, 2013. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there's the no deletions or additions or mistakes in the minutes, move to approve the four minutes as printed.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous. We go to the approval of the agendas. Our next order of business with the addition of consent items number 15, decision items number one, and report item number one along with a supplemental information for the broadband study, which is a PowerPoint presentation. What's your pleasure on the agenda?
Make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, my honor. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That's unanimous, sir. Moving to our presentations tonight, again, we have five presentations. We will start out with our first presentation from Western Piedmont Community College. That will be given by Ms. Sandy Holman, then she will present some financial data for the period of September the 17th, 2013, through December the 31st, 2013. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'll look at page one in your package, this is the summary of the college's budget. The college operates through three primary sources: state funding, county funding, and institutional funds. The largest, of course, is our state appropriations, and our original appropriation was $17,633,240. During the year, though, the state will appropriate additional money for several projects consisting of either special allocations, grants, or projects. Since we last met, the college received additional allocations for customized training projects where we receive money to go out to the industry to provide specific training that they need, either at Case Farms, ViscoTech, Valdez Weavers, industries in Burke County. We also received the North Carolina Back-to-Work Grant for $90,600, which is also related to workforce development and getting people back to work quicker and more efficiently. We received longevity pay for state-funded positions of $177,392, and then we did receive some of the funding, unemployment reserve assistance funding of $23,879. This was to help the college maintain our 1% reserve for the unemployment insurance that they required of us this year. It's going to cost the college approximately $90,000 this year, so they were allowed to give us some additional funding to help offset that. Our institutional budget is mainly comprised of federal, state, and local grants, our bookstore, Student Government Association, and other funds or grants. About 80% of this is our federal grants, mostly consisting of student financial aid. In our county appropriations, this is used for our maintenance, security, housekeeping, insurance, and utilities for the college. And our budget this year is $2,182,000, along with $141,000 for a capital improvement project for the HVAC upgrade, for a total of $2,221,000 for county. If you'll turn to page two, you can see our actual appropriations or revenues received and actual expenditures paid through December 31st, 2013. This is halfway through our fiscal year, and to date, we have spent 45% of our state budget, 45% of county, and 51% of our institutional funds. This is indicative of our spending habits, since a greater amount will be spent in the last half of the year than the first. Although we do have a couple concerns at the college, mainly being utility costs, we're going into the winter months, so we figure our utility costs will be a little bit higher. Our insurance premiums, we do not get those until around the May time period, and that usually consists of about $115,000. So we're watching our expenditures closely, but we feel we're on target. Are there any questions on the budget itself, or any expenditures there?
Sandy, what makes up your institutional funds?
The institutional support that county provides, that consists of the portion of our president's salary and benefits. It also consists of legal fees, unemployment insurance, things that are for the institution in general, and not just operations and maintenance.
I'm talking about on the revenue side?
On the revenue side, for the institutional, that's our federal grants, state grants, mostly student financial aid. About 80% comes from Pell Grants, North Carolina Community College Grants, the North Carolina Lottery Grant that flows through our college into our students.
Would that include student tuition?
No, student tuition is not included on the budget here, because that's receipts for our North Carolina Community College system. So what they do is they appropriate money to the community colleges, but the tuition that we bring in, we give that, it goes right back into the North Carolina Community College system as a whole. If you'll turn to page three, the last page we have, you can see where our county expenditures are broken down into further detail based on categories. It's salaries and benefits at $443,674, and utilities, $299,384, are our largest expenditures for the college, which comprise over 70% of our expenditures to date. Are there any questions?
I have none, thank you. Good report.
Any other commissioners, have any questions? All right, Sandy, looks like there's no questions. Great report, as usual. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to our next item, in accordance with the memorandum of agreement approved by the county and the Board of Education in June of 2013, Mr. Keith Lawson, Burke County Public Schools Finance Officer, will now present the financial data report for the period of October the 1st, 2013, through December the 30th, 2013, describing the application of the county local funding by purpose and function. Keith?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I know you all are always very excited to hear from our numbers, folks, so I'll continue the exhilarating part of tonight's meeting. Our first slide depicts two separate things in a pie chart graph. One, our funding by its various sources: state, federal, local, fines and forfeitures, fund balance allocated, and our special revenue fund. As you can see, our estimated budget or estimated revenues received for the 12, or 13, 14 school year are estimated at just under $103 million. And the second thing that this chart depicts is not only each area of funding, but then the percentage makeup. As you can see, the line share of the school system's funding comes from state sources at 69%, with the second-largest funding source being you all, the county commissioners, at 13.6%. Our second slide, and there's quite a bit of information packed on this slide, I'll attempt to be brief yet informative. We have in our left-hand most column our purpose function, as you all have allocated to us this year, with a description of those expenses. Then for comparative purposes, we have 10-11, 11-12, and 12-13 operational expenses. Then we have our budgeted line items. Item of note on this particular slide is in 12-13, you'll notice an unusual revenue source at the bottom, and that was $2.1 million that was converted from capital funds intended for school construction to our local operating budget. Then we have the 13-14 budget, which in county funding consists of $14,038,400. Following that, we have our first and second quarter results, which is one-half year. Of the 5,100 purpose function, of allocation from the county of $1,888,000, or we have spent to this point, $1,888,000 of the $4.3 million allocated. Noteworthy item in this particular category is our STEAM Academy, so you all are funding that operation, and that's our School of Science, Technology, Engineering, Agriculture, and Advanced Mathematics on the campus of North Carolina School for the Death. Our next item of funding is alternative programs and services. Both of these items that you all are funding this year are new to us in that Halliburton Academy's operations historically have been funded by grant sources. Those grant funds have gone away, so you all are paying for the operation of the Halliburton Academy, and what that academy does is it serves approximately 200 students from the middle and high school setting that, in the traditional middle and high school setting, would not be successful. This program is tailored specifically for them in order to facilitate them graduating from high school and becoming productive citizens. Our other area in this alternative program and services is a mobile pre-K bus. A couple of years ago, we lost funding for that particular bus, and it was parked. We have reintroduced that into our local budget, and of the $100,000 required to operate that mobile pre-K bus annually, it serves 84 otherwise unserved pre-K students in Burke County. Next item would be co-curricular services. Your allocation to us in that category is $58,000 this year. We have spent the allotted $58,000. The remainder of that category, we're funding from fund balance. Next item of note, 5,800 purpose function, consists of two areas, and that's our school nurses. We traditionally maintain 11 positions, of which five of those have been funded from outside sources previous to this year. This year, we lost local support in funding of three nurses, so those were added to our local budget. The other area is safety resource officers. With the safety of students being paramount and at the forefront in today's environment, we have added nine safety resource officers to the traditional nine positions that we already have. What that does is that offers full-time coverage at every middle and high school, and then a rotation of coverage at our elementary schools. We have spent, year-to-date, $261,000 of the $696 allocated. And let me add, as in Sandy, she referenced in her budget, we also are more back-end loaded as far as expenses rather than front-end, so you will see some of our spending accelerate as we draw near year-end. Other category of funding this year is our 6,500 operational support services. We have spent, year-to-date, $4.7 million of the $8.2 million allocated. Some noteworthy items here, and our largest line item would be electricity. And let me add on the topic of electricity. Four years ago, we contracted with an outside agency that serves governmental units, universities, community colleges, and school systems. Over the course of those four years, we have managed to save approximately $7.5 million in utilities and related services in Burke County public schools, or in other words, a 42% reduction in utility costs. Also, I'll add that Burke County Public Schools was recognized in Raleigh as being the only school system in the state of North Carolina to have every school building Energy Star Another large line item in this particular category is maintenance repairs. Now, this is one area of funding that we spend more in the summer, so we've spent well in excess of 50% of that budget, but that spending is curtailed now that we're in session. We tend to try to conduct most of that work when school is not in session. And our last funding category at the bottom would be the 8,100 purpose function payment to other governmental units. What that consists of primarily is charter school tuition. We have a total of 208 Burke County student residents that attend charter schools. In addition to that, our Avery County school tuition, and we pay for 85 students that live in the Jonas Ridge region, and you can understand if any of you made a trip up that way over the weekend, why those students attend Avery County schools rather than Burke because of that climate and environment. Of the $410,000 allocation from the county, we have spent, year-to-date, $197,000. So of the total allocation this year from the county of $14,038,000, we've spent $7,185,000, or just over 50% of this year's allocation.
Any commissioners have any questions for Keith?
No, I don't think there's going to be any questions, Keith. Great report.
Thank you, sir.
Move to our next item. The Burke County Broadband Commission has requested the opportunity to present a study recently completed by ECC Technologies that will include an assessment of current broadband capacity and a recommended business plan to make broadband more accessible to all citizens of Burke County. Mr. Joe Stark, President of ECC Technologies, will be here to make that presentation. Jeb?
Thank you all for having me here tonight. This is a great topic to be discussing. Five years ago, if we asked anybody, any elected officials, economic developers, and the like about broadband, they all would have had the same answer, you know, go ask Verizon, or go ask the carriers, and they'll tell you what you want to know. But broadband has become first and foremost in every community across the country, and I would dare say even developed and undeveloped countries around the world, it's first on their mind. We're going to talk a little bit about what we've been doing over the past year on the project. I'll talk about the process. We'll talk about the types of information we gathered, and then I'll give you a quick summary on what we found. The project goals, project goals were to identify and document broadband infrastructure within the county to the extent possible, and a lot of folks would say, "Well, why do you need to do this? You can't figure out where you want to go until you understand where you are today." So that is the first step in this process, which we've completed. The information's going to be used to develop a plan, a comprehensive plan, for the county to address broadband in the areas that it doesn't have it today. We're going to use it to support economic development initiatives. As we all know, economic development and broadband do go hand-in-hand, in particular in the rural areas. We are going to use it, and we have created a tool using the information that's been gathered to date to create an interactive GIS-based tool that allows the county to model broadband and model economic development going forward. And then the study itself will be used to enhance efficiencies across all forms of the county, whether it's government, education, public safety, healthcare, et cetera. It was a multi-level process that was used. Essentially, we had engineers on the roads. They drove every street. They drove every road. They identified every piece of infrastructure that was out there. That information was then taken and overlaid into a GIS database that the county has, so that you have all of this information readily available to you. We used a number of face-to-face meetings with a lot of different folks, and then we used sources of data that were widely available through purchase and/or through government sources, like the FCC, Public Works, and others. The physical inventory included cable infrastructure, primarily fiber optics and coaxial, which are the two main broadband sources that we're looking at today. We looked at cell and other vertical assets that would support wireless broadband technologies and their ability to roll out across the county. And then lastly, we looked at the physical central office and wireline boundaries that were out there. And to give you an idea what those are, that is the infrastructure from '50 and '75 years ago that allowed them to roll telephone technology out across the county. So we had to understand where that was so that we could build off that. In our face-to-face meetings, we met with several organizations: economic development, information technology for the county. We met with education, both college level and K through 12. We met with healthcare. We met with wireless service providers. We met with broadband service providers that were all in the area and providing services in the county. The data from others is essentially the FCC. We took a look at what they had online, all of the cell towers and vertical assets that are registered. We gathered that information and overlaid that onto the GIS database as well. And I know there's a point to this, I'm going to drive you all crazy, but the other towers as well, there's a lot of towers that are not registered in the county, so we had to gather that information as well. We did purchase data from organizations such as Geotel. Geotel provides industry data that they've gathered. That encompassed with ours provides additional information, as well as Public Works that are out there, water towers and things of those, that nature. What did the assessment determine? Pretty much what we found is that in our meetings that we had with the various folks, it was identified that efficiencies between government could be created by having greater access to broadband. Efficiencies in education, efficiencies in healthcare, efficiencies in public safety. We can clearly identify where tourism can be impacted positively, as well as economic development, by getting broadband in those areas that don't have it today. Advancements in public safety, we're all aware of the new technologies coming out, and the goal, if you will, to come out with a unified statewide and then a national strategy and plan for public safety. Broadband will be a key component of that. What we found is that, in particular, education, their demands are growing for broadband technology at exponential rates. Five years ago, their capacity in the broadband that they had would not suffice today, and it's going to continue to grow as we start to look at getting rid of textbooks and putting everything in digital online components. Students and teachers are going to rely on that broadband technology, and if they don't have access to it at the home, that's going to be a problem. They will be left behind, and that perhaps is what's driving a lot of the grant money that you're seeing for education to come out into these rural areas so that we can make that broadband available to everyone. The healthcare industry has some genuine concerns, because right now, the centralization of healthcare requires that chronic patients and patients in general, they're going to have to travel, they're going to have to commute to get the healthcare they need. Having better access to broadband technology gives them the ability to push these medical services further into the rural communities and get them closer to the folks that need them. In addition to that, the chronic ill, they spend a lot of time and a lot of money treating chronic ill patients and transporting them. Broadband technologies are going to help solve that, so getting the broadband out to these areas that don't have it is important. Education, economic development, and healthcare reasons. What did we find? In general, we found that along the I-40 corridor, and this is no surprise to anyone, you have great access to technology. There's quite a bit of fiber optics through the central part of the county by multiple providers. Broadband is readily available. Cellular technologies are readily available, and we found that there's really no reason why we can't continue to grow the county in that region, having a strong broadband profile. And it's ideal. It's in good shape. The northern and southern parts of the county is, I'm sure you could all guess, not quite so good. They have coverage in areas, but spotty coverage in others. The next component of this is a map. I don't believe you're going to be able to see this map, but I'm going to try to explain it to you as best I can, and as I mentioned, your GIS department has all of this information in electronic format. If you look at the various colors, you'll see there's reds, greens, and blues. Each of those colors represents a type of infrastructure. The green represents infrastructure that's owned by the telephone industry. The red and... The red indicates fiber infrastructure that's owned by the cable TV industry. Blue would be the coaxial cable that's used to deliver your, your home video and broadband services. You'll also notice on there that there are other towers, and there are also some lit buildings on there as well. So we've gathered all of that infrastructure, and again, put it in a map where you can start to pull it apart and identify what the, what the various types of infrastructure are. And also where the holes are, quite frankly. Next, the I-40 corridor, as I mentioned, you've got great access to technology there. We don't think that there's a whole lot that really needs to be focused on in that area. There's plenty of service providers operating in there, and you're in fairly good shape. Competitive broadband services are widely available. And the key to that is technology-based companies that are interested in locating or expanding their, their footprint in Burke County. Competitive broadband services are key for them. They look for that. They need that. And larger technology companies that are research-based are looking for what we call dark fiber. They won't locate in a community that doesn't have dark fiber. And that's important, and that's why when we go and talk about why we gathered all this fiber infrastructure, the dark fiber and the fiber infrastructure is what really is going to help drive that in the future. So in summary, we said, we found that the central part is very good. The north and the south regions, what we found there, that you've got quite a bit of fiber infrastructure along the main, along the major highways and thoroughfares. You've got fairly good access to cellular technology in most of it. Broadband competition is very limited, and in most cases is non-existent. And those are the areas that we want to address, that, that we want to continue to work for and move and improve. But what we did find is that the, the lack of affordable and consistent broadband technologies throughout the northern and southern areas of the county is definitely having an impact. As I mentioned, it's having an impact on economic development. It will impact your, your real estate property rates. It will impact healthcare and education. And in general, it's impacting the quality of life of the citizens. So although, although we found that the central region is well-served, we found that there's, there's sufficient reason to focus our attention on the northern and southern parts. The home office and the, the tourism and real estate will see a benefit by growing or expanding or working with providers to get their broadband out to these areas that don't have it. The education, healthcare, and public safety will also see significant benefits from that going forward. So the next steps, first of all, we think that the next steps, what you've done today is, is outstanding, nothing less than outstanding, of figuring out where you are. Now it's time to figure out how we get to where you need to be. And our next steps that, that we're recommending are to task the broadband committee and, and make them accountable, and recognize the efforts and the work that they're doing, and then task them with getting and expanding this. You know, not letting it go here, but let's move it forward. Let's prioritize the gaps that we found around the county. Let's evaluate the many options that are available, and there are a lot of options available here. And then let's come back to the board to get back to y'all and say, here's what we recommend, and here's how we're going to close those gaps around the county, so that our eventual goal is to get 100 percent broadband coverage and support healthcare, education, public safety, and economic development. That's all I have. Any questions? You just got a 15-minute, that should have taken me three hours.
Mr. Chairman, just one. Timetable, Joe, on that, on getting back and what you reckon, what you will be recommending? Is there a timetable on that?
I think I would, I would leave that up to the board at this point. Typically, I'll be honest with you, I, I think you need to be fairly aggressive. I think you need to task the broadband committee, make sure you have the right members there. Then task that committee to, to not dilly-dally, and let's get back and get it done. Because technology's moving very quickly, and there is a strong push, in particular in education, to get students into computers and get them out of the books. And if that happens before we've got broadband to every student, then that's going to be a problem. So I would, I would make it as quickly as possible.
Maybe address that same question to our county manager, what timetable would we like to see on this?
Well, I think we need to have a long talk about this.
Long talk?
Some of the information that you need to know is, they're saying you're looking at about 112 miles of fiber optic lines, price tag $4.5 million.
That was, that was one option that we threw in there, but we would rather advocate the public-private partnerships. You have some outstanding providers right here. Rocco's sitting right here. Creating that partnership with the folks that are already in the county to do that for you, that was more of an example, instead of you try to do it on your own. But it's, it's really a solid plan to, to go forward in partnership, because I don't think any of you want to be a telephone company.
Brian, are you telling me that's a work session topic then?
Oh, definitely. I think that'd be something to look at in the budget, because you're, you're looking at a substantial commitment, your options, this public-private, that, that takes time. And you're looking at other things that would need to be worked out is, what I saw was about an annual operational and maintenance cost of $332,000. Mounting to, I guess, existing water tanks, they're looking at five, and I'm not sure if this is per tower, or this is the, the total for the five is another $100,000. But I think the action steps that's in your, your more detailed packet says to designate a champion, then to establish a steering committee, and hire a third-party consultant to look at options two and three of the recommendations. So again, I, I think this is a workshop that we need to have to really get into some of the details and answer questions that y'all, the board, may have on this.
You have a lot of willing partners in the county, and I think you need to take advantage of those. And I think you have a lot of really good resources in the county that you could probably pull it off without a consultant. You dedicate them and task them to get it done. Not that I wouldn't mind coming back, but it's, it's a drive from Raleigh, but you know, it's, it's fine, we're happy to do that. But you've got a lot of resources here that are very capable.
But it appears we're not as bad as some counties.
No, you're not. I, I think your biggest issue is the, is tourism and education, because when you've got tourists, and you do a lot of tourism here, and you know that, they have to be able to call 911. That's a, that is a very major concern in any county that has, that has a lot of tourism, and then also has the terrain that we have here, because you have dead spots. If you can't get access to broadband and you can't get access to cellular technologies, that's, that's a public safety issue as well.
But these partners that, that we could partner with, are they going to be willing to go in these rural sections on the south end of the county where the, where the family numbers or houses are going to be kind of far, or are they willing to do that with us, you think?
They're all willing to, to take a look at it. And that's what I said, I think we need to really put the team together, identify those really hotspots that, that we need to focus on, and then let's look at what all the solutions are together. And for you to build your own fiber network is not the answer to that, when you have so much and so many here willing to do that for you. But if you take that and you collaborate it with public safety and other things that are going on, it becomes very attractive for, for a outsider, if you will, non-government to, to partner with you to do that.
Okay. Any other questions for Joe?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have one.
Yes, sir.
I looked through these documents. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself? What did you do or provide, or?
I was the consultant in the last statement. Myself, been in Moorhead City for 35 years, raised my family there, started my family there. I've been a nomad, because I couldn't find work, quite frankly. And our, our company focus is to bring jobs back to North Carolina. And we are consultants, and we travel, we work around the world, developing technology programs for a lot of organizations and a lot of communities, from major tier-one cities, NFL cities, down to extremely rural communities such as this.
Second question, I went on your, on your website, and there's a big picture of Golden Leaf. Do you and Golden Leaf work together, or have a relationship?
We are the, are you all familiar with MCNC?
Mm-hmm.
MCNC has won about $150 million in, in BTOP funds to build a fiber optic network around the state of North Carolina. It's the only such state in the country that has an infrastructure of such magnitude that reaches so many different areas. We're the commercialization partners for MCNC. Golden Leaf is part of that team, and our job is to figure out how to take that fiber and create economic development opportunities around all parts of the state. And, and yes, this is one of the state, one of the counties that the fiber runs through along the I-70 corridor.
I guess, because of the complete county, what you're looking at is probably coaxial, something like electricity that Duke and these other people have to build the power lines and actually run a line to each house that has that. Some of these mountain counties, as you well know, some of those people live so far, far back in there, they don't want no line to run back there, and they're not interested in that. So I don't, I don't know how much this would cost, but in the end, it's going to be a heck of a lot more than four and a half million dollars for someone who wants to do that. And the second question, I guess, to follow up on that, the fighters we have now, are they willing to, to expand, or are they talking about expanding or working in that area?
I'll go to your first question first. It's not realistic to think that anyone's going to build fiber to the home in some of those areas. So we believe the wireless last mile is going to be the key. And that's why we talked about the water towers and the other vertical assets that the county may have, because making those available to folks that want to provide those services reduces their costs and makes it affordable for them to do it. So yeah, absolutely. And the providers that we've talked to today, they've all said they would be interested in sitting down with the county to work out a solution on how to, how to solve this. And they can bring, they can bring private and grant dollars with them.
Charter has talked about recently, they were on, in the process of expanding theirs and upgrading their system. To what extent are they doing that, or have you talked to them about that?
Charter has, I haven't talked to them specifically about where they're going to expand their system, but they've made a major play for Time Warner, so I think they're going to spend a lot of money if they are, if they're successful. But they have access to a lot of grant dollars, and part of that partnership would be the county to work with them, as well as the other providers, and seek grant dollars wherever possible. They're out there, it's just a matter of putting the team together to go after them. So we're not suggesting that the county would spend any money at this point. Let's go through and find out what those options are, and then let's, let's put them in place. And I don't honestly believe that one solution fits all. You may have partnerships with many providers.
So that, Mr. Chairman, it looks like we have to, got a lot of talking to do and meetings to attend in the future. Thank you.
I'd like to, if I really, if I could, introduce Keith Conover from the North Carolina State Department of Commerce and their broadband division. He'll say a quick thing and let you know where the state is on this subject as well.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I can address some of the things that you talked about, and one of them being, how do, how are we in comparison to other counties? But first, just quickly, what I do, I am one of three technical assistance directors that works with communities, counties, and providers. And we try and bring broadband to areas where it is not today, exactly what we've been talking about today. And we've had, had a lot of success in several counties by lowering the boundaries to market entry for some of the providers, like the fixed wireless providers that Joe talked about. And we do that by talking about leveraging county assets in some cases. And I can talk about two specific examples. In McDowell County, ARC funds were secured for equipment on a tower in Grant Mountain. The provider was allowed to be on that tower for free by the county in exchange for four firehouses getting free service. So these are some of the flexible things that can be done with a provider, like a fixed wireless provider. And I agree with Joe, that's going to be the answer for folks that are in remote areas, have 1,500 feet driveways, places where you're not going to get fiber to the home. I will also say that we found that, in many cases, in working with the fixed wireless providers, that their service is very reliable. Six mags down, one meg up, it's not utopia, but it's certainly better than a lot of people deal with in, in the western part of the state. I have 35 counties, and I've still got folks that are on dial-up, and very frustrating for them. So I would applaud you on two things. Number one, having the study done, because it tells you where you are. Number two, having a broadband committee, because what I have seen is in cases where grant money has been awarded, it has typically been to counties that have a broadband committee in place. It has shown structure, it's been there for a while, and it's moving in a direction where it looks like it's going to get some things done. So I would caution you not to be so pessimistic about the amount of money the county will have to spend, because we have sound, found some situations where even sans the grant money, we've been able to work out some things with providers. Some of them are here today, and we've had great relationships with them. So I think really the next steps are to maybe steer that committee from being a planning committee to being an implementation committee. And it would be my pleasure to attend those meetings and help out and talk about some of the success stories that we have had, some of the things that we've done to actually get people service. That's how I measure my success, is folks that didn't have service today having it tomorrow. And also remember, from the economic development standpoint, when you can bring a competitor in, it not only helps to broaden the area where folks can get service, but it also allows your businesses to have a choice. They can get backup service from a different provider. If you've got a business looking to move into Burke County, that's important to them, because they don't want their service to go down. So there's a lot of benefits in, in doing this. And I was just, again, you know, all for my services, I've already started a relationship with Chuck Mosley. We started gathering information on the other side of this, which is the demand. We have a website where folks can go into. Right now, I've got over 60 names in Burke County of folks that would love to get either better service or have service, and I've communicated with a lot of those folks. Some of them have actually done petitions. So they're excited. Some have contacted me, because they've seen news of this potential partnership. And I just wanted to let you know from a state standpoint that we fully support it, and I'm, I'm looking forward to working with Chuck and the broadband committee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for me? Any questions? Thank you. Thank you so much. Move on to presentation number four. Budget changes for the fiscal year 2013-14 have made a significant impact on EMS emergency response times, therefore, and other considerations also. So Greg Curry, our EMS director, is going to give us a good update on some of these changes. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate you giving me a couple minutes of your time. Generally, when we department heads stand before you, it's because we've got a significant problem ongoing, and we need some support in helping to find a solution. So I'm honored to stand here and basically give a brief presentation on how some of the decisions that you've already made has had a major impact on the community. In the emergency medical services, we have a lot of different missions that we have to accomplish. We have a lot of different priorities, and those priorities may change from day to day, but the one thing that never, never changes is two significant parts of our job. How fast can we get an ambulance to your door when you need us, and how well-trained are our personnel when we get there? And I was blessed, when I started here a little over a year ago, that when I looked at the hand I'd been dealt, we've got some pretty outstanding paramedics. We've got 90 employees in our service, and I would say the majority of them do an excellent job day in, day out. So the focus on that falls more on our training officer back there to make sure that they maintain their capabilities and improve on a ever-growing pre-hospital landscape. The response times was something we needed to address, however. Some of the history of EMS, of the Burke County EMS, when I say history, I'm talking prior to fiscal year 2013-14, when, as you said, we made some significant changes. Burke County EMS is responsible for pretty much everything inside of the boundaries of this county. We're responsible, obviously, when 911 is dialed, we respond, lights and sirens, to help you in your time of need. We're also responsible for non-emergency transports, which is rather unique, probably more so than some people know. Having worked all around the United States involved in EMS, I can tell you that more often than not, you've got one, two, three, multiple private agencies who are battling to get the revenue from the non-emergency, and the emergency side is not affected as often. I admire Burke County to say, basically, these are our citizens, and we'll take care of them. It was our job to basically figure out, how can we do it in a better fashion? Obviously, aside from emergency, non-emergency, we're responsible- Obviously, aside from emergency, non-emergency, we're responsible for what's been averaging about 65 search and rescues up in that big ditch on the hill that they call the Linville Gorge. We're responsible for swiftwater rescues, we're involved in high-angle rescues, a lot of different variables make up what the emergency medical services do. Prior to this fiscal year, we had six emergency ambulances staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They were staffed at the advanced life support level, which means that they had at least one, most likely two paramedics on them. Of those six ambulances, and they were responding out of five different stations, out of those six ambulances, two of them were actually located at what is our main base, Station One, which is right behind Grace Hospital, or what's now called CMC Morganton. That was one of the things that when we started to look at a strategic plan, and we looked at the layout of the county, and specifically the layout of Morganton, Morganton's a pretty spread-out city, and we basically had two ambulances that were located behind the hospital that were the first ones out to respond to any emergency in the city. We also had one emergency ambulance that was staffed Monday through Friday, 9:30 in the morning till 6:30 in the evening. That was kind of our peak demand or our primetime truck. They took the workload off the other crews, and we have an additional ambulance still that is located at the George Hildrein Rorriton Club in the South Mountain area that functions Monday through, or excuse me, seven days a week for the first 12 hours of the shift, and then we close that down afterwards. The big changes that we brought to your attention at the beginning of this budget year, we needed to focus on two things. We do a lot of convalescent transports, and those are time-consuming, but more important is they cut into our response times. If we had an ambulance that, let's say, was located in Valdez, and they had to take a non-emergency transport to Caldwell County, or to Baptist Hospital, or whatever, that means in the few, the several hours, five hours, whatever the transport was, that they were out of their zone district, that if a 911 call came in, be it a heart attack, a stroke, a seizure, a baby being born, whatever that was, that we had to have an ambulance respond from another district to that location. Obviously, that's gonna add minutes to the clock. We had to get a grasp on the convalescent transports. The other thing was, as I mentioned, there were two ambulances that were located down by the hospital. We didn't have a real clear coverage in the Chester Field and the Oak Hill area. And also, you guys have driven Sterling and Green Street, especially if you do it on a Friday afternoon around 4:30, just something as simple as getting an ambulance from the hospital to the other end, even to this building, is, is going to be time-consuming. So those, those were the areas we wanted to focus on. In June 2013, we took one of those two ambulances that were behind the hospital, and we relocated it, we put it in the basement temporarily of the Burke Senior Center. That was minimal expense, that was a little drywall, and that was about it. It was an ambulance that already existed, a crew that was already on the schedule. All we did was move one of the two crews to this side of Morganton. We added no additional personnel, and we added no vehicles to make that happen. In September of 2013, specifically September 9th, to be exact, we began operations of a non-emergency transport team. They function Monday through Friday from 09:30 to 18:30, the same as our primetime truck does. That was based on a lot of data done by Major Black, to find out that that was the peak hours, that's when the call was most often coming in. Their job is simply to focus on non-emergency transports. They do not run 911 calls, they're not authorized to run 911 calls. They work hand-in-hand with our dispatch and with the hospital to try and get some schedule flowing so that they can accomplish as much as they can in the hours that they're here during the day. We did hire one EMT and one EMT intermediate to take on that task. We were fortunate enough to find two personnel with a unique experience. One had 14 years' experience answering 911 calls, pretty much knew every one of the discharge planners from the two hospitals by name, maybe didn't meet them all face-to-face, but had established a long-term relationship. And the other person had spent seven years as a clerk in the emergency room at Grace, and knew all the nurses and all the discharge planners face-to-face over those seven years. So they, really, when they started September 9th, they, they got us going several steps into the process, and we didn't really have to build from the ground up. We did not add any ambulances to that mission.